You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 29th, 2024 meeting of LaPorte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Good evening, I'm going to call the LaPorte County Council regular meeting.
Reporting in progress.
For May 29th at 6:00 PM to order. If everybody please stand for the pledge and then after the pledge, I'm asking for a moment of silence for Councilman Mark Yagowski's mother-in-law Janet Winsec and also for retired firefighter Dave Liebig, who's a great family guy that passed away, so.
Mr. Yagowski?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call made a honor. No comment.
I was gonna, it's usually Rhonda does it, so that's why I usually say it, so my apology.
Mr. Auditor.
Mister.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Yagowski?
Present.
Councilman Keel?
Present.
Councilman Cunningham?
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum?
Present.
Councilwoman Novak?
Sheriff President.
President Novak. Councilman Mullenauer?
He is not going to be able to make it tonight. We wish him the best.
And Councilman Karanka?
Present.
Six of seven present.
Thank you. Approval of the May 29th, 2024 agenda for tonight?
Motion approved with the following removal on page three.
Three.
Second to last item requesting additional appropriation from public safety for two probation officers missing budgets. Will remove that for this evening due to advertising issues. That's for adult probation.
Steve.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I would offer up an amendment also to include a discussion on your new business and item number four, discussion of implementing a capital projects plan for departments.
I just want to hear, you said you wanted to do an ordinance or you wanted to do a policy?
No, discussion.
Discussion.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the April 22nd, 2024 meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Karanka.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keel. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment, public comment.
We have another set of minutes.
Yeah, they do one here.
It's all that we have on our agenda, President.
It's sitting on our desk. No, no, we covered those. The first is the agenda, the second, we just did this. We just did this.
What's an agenda?
To clear this up, there's another set of minutes for the workshop. I'd make a motion to approve those minutes as well.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Keel and second by Mr. Cunningham to approve our blast workshop minutes also. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Can we get a date for the record, please?
April 22nd.
Thank you.
It's on your agenda?
No.
I, no comment.
Yeah, I just, I want to hit this.
Nope. Doesn't mean. Public comment.
Good evening, Steve Hallfield, 6782 East 100 South Mill Creek. Under correspondence, I attended the US 30 transportation studies in Hannah and the one in Wantata. This company has done an amazing job explaining what they want to do, providing, taking public input as to how things should be done and what we think should be done since those of us that live up here and use that road continuously, I think by the time they get done, in I think two more years or three maybe, I think it's going to be an outstanding project that'll help LaPorte County, especially the South County. That's why I was going to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak? Anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
Hi, yes, Council President Novak is Joe Haney, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, thank you, I apologize, County Commissioner Joe Haney, I apologize for being on Zoom, but my father's not doing so well and I'm on the road, a little visit him right now. Had two items to, I wanted to address here this evening. First, the city's board's request for $500,000. My concern of that is simply that over the past two years, the city has kind of been, for lack of a better term, thumbing their nose at the unincorporated residents of LaPorte County, as you well know. We've seen numerous times where they threaten to cut off water to county residents if they didn't annex in enough other things, so my concern is, while we certainly need housing and, for example, down in Kingsford Heights, they're doing an amazing job down there, 70 houses underway, nearly 300 more to go, we certainly need the housing all local LaPorte County, including the city of LaPorte County, with the cities, over the past two years seemingly putting their, their thumb in the eye of the unincorporated residents of LaPorte County, I don't think it would be appropriate to approve that request until they try and change their, change their mind on how they interact with the county. I believe we should have a good partnership and a partnership goes both ways, so I, I wish the city of LaPorte luck on their project, but I don't believe it's, it's appropriate for us unless they decide to change their tune to be subsidizing what's been some kind of difficult behavior. The other item I wanted to address was the commissioners, Board of Commissioners' request for $70,000 for professional services. As, as most of you know, the commissioners sometimes treat the professional services account and legal fee account as the same thing, technically lawyers' fees are professional services, so there's a bit of a shell game that can happen there and I know we have quite a bit of bills, tens of thousands of dollars bills coming in for the, both the suit against the county and the suit against Commissioners Merzinski and Graham Rosa personally. Right now, I think we're looking about $30,000 that's due to ICORN and ICORN, obviously have some concerns with the billing that they're not actually fully itemized into my satisfaction, but that's for another day. In any event, if, if the request from the commissioners, which I don't know exactly what the request is for, other than it's on there, I wasn't informed, but if that request is going to be granted, if you would earmark it directly for professional services and line item out legal fees, I believe that would be appropriate. I would hate to see them play another shell game like they have the past couple of months and depleting the professional services accounts to pay legal fees, what's most likely been unbeknownst to some of you, I know I've tried to have some conversations with a few of you, so I appreciate your time this evening and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I hope you guys have a great meeting and I'm going to get back on the road here.
Thank you, drive safe.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Anybody else on Zoom? Any other public comments? Hearing none, public comments closed? Moving on to department head reports? Any department heads that would like to report?
I'll come up just because it's been a while. Heather Stevens, LaPorte County Clerk, I came to say thank you guys for trusting me to move the county to the vote centers, this was wildly successful and I'm tickled pink, it sounds like, sounds like the voters really liked it, there were no issues and someday it's going to save us some money, so.
Someday.
Someday. I think what, what wasn't considered before was the fact that we originally had two early voting locations when this budget was established, now we have four, plus we have a mobile unit that has, has been difficult to keep running, but we're getting there, so we're working out the little kinks and, but we did, we did save money on, on the amount of poll workers needed and things like that, so.
Good job. Thank you. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Hearing none. Liaison reports, start with Justin?
The primary report for me this month is, yesterday, Councilman Karanka and I met as part of the committee to study the insurance committee, we reviewed the draft ordinance, came up with a lot of good conversation about it and recommendations, I'll be working on revising that ordinance to include, better include the commissioners, I did solicit feedback from them last week, also just some other various small edits to this and I'll be sending you guys notes from that and I'm hoping that we can bring it up at our next meeting for further consideration.
Thank you.
Adam? Since our last meeting, there were two RDC meetings that we attended, they attended an extension board interview session for a new educator, ag educator and a few of the, actually the BZA meeting for the, for the primary discussion point was the industrial solar farm, lots of, a lot of perspective to observe there, so.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham?
I'd like to mention the fine job the EMS did with their awards last week and in light of the fact that we have a five-page agenda, I'll waive other liaison report.
Mr. Yagowski?
Same, Mr. President.
Mr. Roosevelt?
I'm just going to say that I was at the RDC meeting and unfortunately I was not able to make last night's meeting, that was known before the meeting was set and I was on the committee, so I do have plenty of comments for it and I will be forwarding those shortly.
Thank you. I just want to, I guess the one thing that I just want to touch on is, I was invited to the double track ribbon cutting that was done this last month and it was a huge success, a long time coming and as everybody knows, the county thanks to Mr. Yagowski and his leadership back in the time and all the work he's put into NICD and everything else over there, so to finally see that project come to fruition was a, was a big plus, so thank you for your work, Mark.
Thank you.
Any correspondents?
Did receive correspondence from C2 Strategic Communications, Tom Spalding regarding the US 30 transportation study.
I think they're, thank you.
Was there an actual study included? You mentioned the study, but there was no study included?
It wasn't.
Thank you.
It wasn't really correspondence, he was just, President Novak asked us to put it there on the agenda, I believe he's speaking.
He's, he's.
Mistaken.
Are you?
Is that Mr. Lackey speaking?
Someone else?
Second person.
Yes, this is Brett Lackey with the US 30 West Pell Study, I am here.
Great, you. Would you like to speak at this time?
Yes, sir, if this is a good time, I'd be happy to.
Perfect, thank you.
Certainly, would it be all right if I share my screen, I do have a very brief presentation here? Okay. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, first off, thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes on your agenda tonight, I did just hear that you have a five-page agenda, I will do my best to keep this as brief as possible, my name is Brett Lackey, I'm with a firm called CDM Smith, the project manager on the NDOT US 30 West Pell Study, so tonight I just wanted to give a brief update on where we're at with the study and the alternatives development process and touch on, on the next steps. So as a quick refresher, the Pell studies include 180 miles along US 30 and US 31, the Propel US 30 West study specifically begins at State Road 49 in Vaparezzo, extends east along US 30 to Beach Road in Marshall County and also includes a stretch of US 31 from the US 30 interchange south to County Road 700 South. So the Pell study process is likely different than what most are used to with NDOT projects, first off, it's a study, not a project, and really we're looking at a 20-year horizon for transportation investments, that means that everything we're doing is, is, is out to the year 2045, but we don't anticipate that these Pell studies are going to identify or recommend one single build alternative, instead the studies will result in a reasonable set of alternatives that could move forward in the future as part of NDOT's regular call for projects. So during, recently during our public comment period for the draft level two alternative screening, which I'm going to touch on here in a few slides, in that 30-day period, we had four community office hours, we had our reports at 11, libraries in the area, and then we've had stakeholder advisory committee and Farm Bureau meetings. So right now, as I mentioned, we're in the second phase of the alternatives development and screening process, which is level two, the draft level two screening report did come out at the end of March and was available for public comment through April 30th, right now, we're working to address the comments that we received and then finalize that level two report, but to make it very clear, we are accepting comments throughout the study, which is at this time anticipated to go to the end of the year. So given the size and complexity of these study areas, the way the Pell screenings are set up is we're doing three levels of alternative screenings, and so at each step, each of the three steps, there'll be a, there'll be a smaller number of potential solutions, but the level of detail increases at each step. So during the first step, which was level one, universe of alternatives, we identified 55 improvement concepts to address the various issues and the desired outcomes in the study area. That, that list of 55 improvements included a variety of things, you know, adding turn lanes, converting to interchanges, large-scale improvements, small-scale improvements, everything in between. So then in level two, the purpose of the level two screening is to evaluate location-specific improvements for reasonability and potential impacts, so the improvements considered at level two are what we first identified in level one, but then in level two, those solutions are being qualitatively evaluated at specific locations, those specific locations are primary intersections in each study area. The way we're defining that primary intersections are those, those roadways which intersect US 30 or 31 that are designated as a major collector or higher. So in total, we looked at 29 primary intersections at level two and seven of those intersections are within LaPorte County. So now looking ahead to the love, the last step, the level three screening that we're just starting to work on now, this is where we're going to develop and analyze improvement packages for smaller areas or segments within the study area, so we'll break the study area down into smaller planning segments and in level three, we're looking at not only the primary intersections, but the secondary intersections as well and all of the roadway sections in between, so the total US 30 and US 31 corridors. At level three, we're doing both qualitative and quantitative factors in a full assessment of cost benefits and impacts. So just quickly to touch on the level two screening process, it really had four steps. The first one was a decision tree assessment tool, it's basically a series of standardized questions to identify the scale of the improvements that were needed at each primary intersection, this is based on safety and operational data, as well as the input that we're receiving from the public. And then step two was a planning level traffic, traffic operations analysis. Step three was a qualitative evaluation matrix and this is where we're looking at each improvement concepts ability to meet the purpose and need for the study, we're looking at the anticipated environmental impacts and we're looking at relative costs. Finally, the last step in the level two screening was a conceptual footprint comparison, this is where we're actually drawing those designs onto the map to basically establish a high-level estimation of the footprint or the area of disturbance. So the improvements varied, you know, throughout the corridor and throughout LaPorte County specifically, but some of the improvements that were, that are included in the level two report specifically for LaPorte County include access management, free flow facilities, a variety of intersection improvements, adding and extending turn lanes, acceleration lanes, it also includes some innovative intersection designs like RCIs or R-cuts, roundabouts, displaced left turns, green tea intersections, there are recommendations for crossroad overpasses and underpasses, as well as interchanges. So the 29 primary intersection locations can be seen on this slide, on this map, and so for level two, the seven primary intersections in LaPorte County that we looked at were the US 30 intersections with Main Street and US 421, both in Wantata, and then US 30 and County Road 600, US 30 and Thompson and Hannah, and US 30 and old, US 30 and Hannah, US 30 and County Road 300 and Hannah, and US 30 and State Route 39. On this slide, this is just a summary sheet that identifies each of the alternatives that are advancing at each location and it's just a quick way to summarize what is a very large report, and so numbers six through 12 on the top row are those that correspond with the LaPorte County intersections, the ones that I just, just listed. So right now, we're busy processing these comments that we've received during the level two public comment period and then we're revising our level two report accordingly, but again, I wanted to mention that draft level two report is still available online to be reviewed and we will be taking comments throughout the entire Pell study on everything that we produce and put on the website and there, there are several documents on there. This is a QR code on the screen here that can take folks to the website, but the website is www dot propelus30 dot com, like I said, the full report is there, we also created an interactive map that has a lot of the report data in it in a very easy-to-use interactive map format, so we really encourage folks to, to check out our website and the social media accounts, review these materials and reports and continue to comment and stay involved as we transition from level two to the level three alternatives analysis. The level three we do anticipate being out towards the end of the summer, at which time we will have another series of public information meetings, seeking more comments on those recommendations before we finalize anything. So I thank you again for, for allowing me a few minutes on your agenda tonight, all the websites and the social media that I mentioned are listed on the screen here, with that, I'm happy to take any questions if the council does, does have any, but otherwise, thank you, thanks again for your time and please, please stay in touch and stay in contact with our, with our website.
Thank you, I think we have a couple of questions, Justin?
Sure, absolutely.
Could you clarify, there was, as I was looking through the report, which is very detailed, there were a couple of intersections that were missed, 1100 West and Wantata stood down and there were several of the intersections around Hannah that weren't really included in much detail in this, will those be expanded upon in the next round of the study?
Yes, absolutely, and that's a common, common concern that we're hearing, again, in order to kind of make this build on itself, we, we needed to start somewhere and we started with primary intersections again, which were those that are major collectors or above, so they're taking a certain amount of traffic volume, but at level three, we are looking at every intersection with US 30 within LaPorte County, secondary and otherwise, as well as the, the segments of road in between those intersections, so that everything in LaPorte County will be looked at.
Thank you.
Sure. Quick comment.
Sure.
So not having been able to attend any of the workshops, but hearing a lot of feedback from local residents in the area and then hearing comments from Mr. Hallfield earlier, the, the items that you showed as challenges and points of concern that you're considering in this level two and transitioning into the level three phases seem to fit from all the descriptions of problems that were raised with this expansion project, so I'm glad to hear that you are taking this feedback seriously from, from residents of this county.
Thank you, yeah, the public comments, public aspect is a absolutely critical component to the Pell study, it really is not successful without continued involvement from the public, so we appreciate those comments.
Any other comments?
No, thank you.
Hearing none, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. President, end of correspondence.
Thank you. See, see how that works? Moving on, says public hearing on mine. Do we have a public hearing tonight? All right. For the ordinance and resolutions?
It's for the hearing.
The confirmatory resolution? Right.
Yep.
Yep. So we'll introduce the ordinance first, then we'll open up the public hearing. Absolutely. So we have a resolution tonight, 2024-05, a confirmatory resolution for Spina Enterprise Economic Revitalization Area. What's your preference?
Motion to read by title only.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? By title only, please.
This is a confirmatory resolution of the LaPorte County Council determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming a declaratory resolution adopted by the council for Spina Enterprises for personal and real property. Personal and real property.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. So a public hearing is now open regarding the confirmatory resolution for Spina Enterprise Economic Development Revitalization Area, this is a, it used to be, help me out, Mr.
Harrison Electric.
Harrison Electric.
Yes, sir.
Harrison Electric in Michigan City, over on 400, been a long time company in the area and constantly making improvements.
Abatements to them.
Yeah. So.
Thank you, Mr. President, Matt Riordan, Office of Community and Economic Development, Spina approached the county, they're making a, an investment in a piece of equipment, just a little history, as Councilman Yagowski pointed out, they have, the, LaPorte County has helped this company in the past, you know, oftentimes there's big projects and big deals and everybody hears about them and data center this and, you know, big warehouse that, this is a small company that's continued to invest in LaPorte, they have currently 19 employees, their payroll is about 950,000, as a result of this investment of 600, 167,000, they're going to create three new jobs and increase their payroll by 150,000, so it's the recommendation of the Office of Economic Development that the council favorably consider the request for the, or the confirmation of the creation of the economic revitalization area and approval statement of benefits submitted by Spida.
Thank you. So anybody from the public would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom?
Mr. Riordan, what is the amount of the abatement that they're seeking or will be seeking in the future?
The total amount of investment at this point is 167,000, so the estimated tax breakdown is the company would save approximately 7,100 and that benefit to the county would be about 4,225 in change. The other part about this project is they're going to continue to invest in my discussions with their accountant, indicate that they are looking towards a $7 to $10 million investment in the near future, so creating this area is certainly going to make it more enticing and inviting for this company to continue to invest.
Thank you. Mr. Yagowski?
I had a question, Mr. Riordan, just more statement, when I, we first introduced our stuff with the company, one of the things that, that's to me is, is a fantastic thing, they go to the schools and they get these, they get young adults and they bring them into the employment, they actually have, they actually have a 65% retention rate of high school students, I think that's just amazing by themselves.
That's great.
No, it's, again, it's not always about the big project and the big deal, this is a, a smaller company that has been rooted in the community and, you know, this is also part of what we do in economic development, finance and planning, is to make sure that there's opportunity for those that are seeking a little bit of assistance.
Definitely. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in the hearing? Public hearing is now closed. What's your preference on?
President? I'd like to make a motion for resolution number 2024-05.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum to approve resolution 2024-05. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is ordinance 2024-05, establish an account for payment of legal expenses for LaPorte County Auditor's Office. What's your preference?
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
Just for my information only, what's the difference between the department coming to us and asking for the legal fees or this ordinance, which they're still going to have to come back to the county and ask for legal fees?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Well, we all know the issue between the commission and what's been going on with the auditor's office, as I stated the last time, the auditor's office, you know, has legal issues that they have to deal with, this current litigation they have to deal with, if this, establishing this account will give the authority to the council to go ahead and take a look at the bills, allow them to retain an attorney and to deal with those issues. This was one of the recommendations that was made to me by Ms. Leatherman from the State Board of Accounts, saying that some counties set this up because many times the auditor's office feels like they're an island in and of themselves, so that's the purpose. I don't know that it, I don't know that it, it's really any different, except it, it establishes a framework. He has a legal issue, he comes to you all, or whoever the auditor's office is, they come to you all, you all, he, he seeks an attorney, you all approve the attorney that would be retained, you approve the rate, you review the bills and then it gets paid. So, so, so it's just sort of establishing a, a framework as opposed to So, so, so it's just sort of establishing a framework as opposed to, as opposed to, there's been allegations in the past that he's paid a bill that didn't get approved by the commission, and then the commission, that, all the other stuff that's, that's going on. So this was an effort in order to settle down the Mishigash, for lack of a better word in Yiddish, that has been going on. So that, that's the answer.
So Mr. DiMartino, so does that supersede then the commissioners' ability to vote and go over the bills that they do?
For the, for the auditor's office.
So this is okay by the commissioners that we, that we are taking this measure then?
Another question, is there some sort of benefit that's conferred by doing this as an ordinance instead of a policy? We don't typically do ordinances for the establishment of accounts. I'm not opposed to it, I think it makes sense here, but.
Well, it's just, if it's a policy, there's really, not there's going to be a whole bunch of teeth in this anyway, because it still has to go on the claims docket. But if there's an ordinance, it's published, it's not an internal policy, it, it's, it's out in the public.
Thank you.
I am trying to resolve this issue that has been going on for years, and this is one mechanism that I've thought about in order to try to resolve it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like this read by title only?
Mr. President, I'd make, read ordinance number 2024-05 by title only.
Motion by Mr. Gagelski, second by Mr. Karanka. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? By title only, please.
An ordinance establishing an account for the payment of legal expenses for the Laporte County Auditor's Office.
And just before you vote, just another thing on the question, some counties do this in the budgetary process. They give a line item to the auditor's office for legal expenses. However, in some of the comments that I've received, then the council would lose control, lack control of the expenses or monitoring the expenses. So there's two ways to, that you can go about this.
What's your preference?
Motion to suspend the rule, and with unanimous consent, pass it on its second and final reading, by title only.
You mean both readings? Let me do both readings.
It's been our custom to read it two times.
Right. So we'll do. To have them both tonight?
Yeah.
Yep. All we have to do is have one nay.
Is there a second?
Whoop.
Is there a second?
Second.
To suspend the rules?
Well, right, right now, you're just moving to suspend the rule.
Right.
So if you don't want to go forward.
A motion by Mr.
Nay.
We have a motion by Judge Mr. Keel, and seconded by Mr. Karanka, to suspend the rules for tonight on this item. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So you're not, you didn't suspend the rule, so now you get a motion to, for first reading.
All right. Is there a motion?
Didn't we vote on first reading already?
No.
No, we don't.
Motion to read by title only. Is that a motion?
They didn't, no.
Motion?
They didn't vote on it.
Motion by Mr. Keel.
They didn't approve.
Second. Second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions or comments? First reading. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Five. One, two, three, four.
Four, zero.
Four, two.
Four, two.
Four, two. Four, two, write it down before it changes.
Four, two on first read.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. So that'll be added to our next agenda. Moving on to old business, approval of. Are we good?
He, he asked me.
For the two day votes. Mr. Gagelski and Mr. Rosenbaum.
Thank you.
Are we good now? Okay. Approval of, approval of overlap in pay to include the newly hired party chief for the drainage board and the outgoing party chief through May 31st. This was brought up at our last meeting, and we gave, I believe we did a motion of support for it, so we just were formalizing it.
You approved 30 days, so this is just a few more days past that 30 days.
Took it to the final day.
Yeah.
All right. What's your preference?
Mr. President, I'd prefer you explain the party chief's position.
This is in the surveyor's office?
Other parties.
Has nothing to do with party and has nothing to do with chief.
Nothing, no, nothing. It's, it's the, it's the position, the, the person who was there was there for an awful long time, I know that, and had a lot of experience, so I'm not sure why they're called, why it's advertised.
Having attended a drainage board meeting, it's essentially the facilitator of the meeting as a whole, much like Mary Jane during the RDC meetings.
Okay. All right. Does that answer your question, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Do we have a final figure as to what the additional monies would be?
It's in their budget.
It's in their budget, then?
It's all in their budget.
It's covered in the budget.
Big enough difference in steps.
Okay.
All right. What's your preference?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Karanka.
Second?
Second by Mr. Cunningham. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to new business, consider approval of council president's authorization to hire replacement position for the Laporte County IT Department System Tech. You want me to read these all?
No.
You want to do?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to do A, B, C, and D.
So just read off the four jobs.
Laporte County IT Department for a test system tech GIS coordinator under the assessor's office, billing maintenance position, and the Park Department Rec Education Programmer.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham. All those in favor say aye?
Quick question.
Yep.
One quick question about the GIS coordinator, there was some talk about moving that around to a different department. I feel like Mr. Gagelski has the, the background on that.
Unfortunately, I do. So, if you notice, it came out under commissioner, and then it went back and forth here. This job was, this job was a department head. It's very important, it's an important job that we had. There was some bad politics years ago that was played on this position, the individual that was in office. We were able to hire again, the council's wishes was that we would hire, but it would go under a different department. I tried to get that straight with the commissioners, but nobody wants to bend on this thing, but I'll take anybody's suggestion, but I believe that, I still believe that this should be a department head, but that's my opinion, because it's, if you go and talk to economic development, if you talk to anybody that this person was in touch with, he was well-informed. It takes a skill set. We're not talking.
Absolutely. So discuss this more in budget hearings, I guess?
Essentially.
Essentially, unfortunately. See if we can find one.
But more or less, this is a, a critical key individual.
Single point?
A single point of failure.
Absolutely.
Cool.
Big time. And as I said, with, it's, you can just ask Mr. Ridden, just for example, he could tell you that himself.
Thanks for the background.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't get any more.
Nope, that's okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item, discuss ARP fund deadlines. Carl Sender. Good evening, Carl.
Good evening, council president and members of the council. Your ARP fund with the 21,344,000 that you have received, the amounts that have not been yet encumbered or appropriated need to be appropriated by the end of this year. So by December 31st, 2024, the council will need to appropriate those funds. Second, they need to be fully expended by December 31st, 2026. If they're not, I believe you're in danger of having to return funds to the federal government if they're not spent by, in two years.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Gagelski. So I've asked this numerous times, too many times I want to talk about, that once that money is available, is available to the council, if the council would use it for budgetary process, because it goes back in the general fund. If you follow just the rule that you're talking about specifically, then the commissioners would have to appoint that, that idea out there, not the council. We can only vote if we were still talking about the original ARP. Council has no authority to do anything until the commissioners give a project.
I believe that's correct.
I'm, I'm, actually, I know it's, I know it's correct.
Yep.
Studying this whole thing. So I'm not, so I'm back to the same question I asked at least four meetings, you guys can remember. Is this money available back to the general fund, or is it not available to the general fund, and can we use it for general fund? Because we, I know you're shaking heads, that's not the answer I got out of four meetings. So my question still stands where we are. I, we don't even talk about this last meeting, so.
I don't believe you can transfer this money to any other fund. It has to be, remain in the ARP fund, and it has, it can be used for any, the county has met the revenue loss requirement. So you can basically spend this money on any governmental purpose, but it has to be spent out of the ARP fund.
Correct, so it can, it can go and supplement our budget.
So you could expend certain expenditures paid by another fund, such as the general fund, but it has to be expended out of the ARP.
Fair enough, and that's just, that's just a transfer for us to do it. So, so that, that was the question before, so, but if you do follow the rules, if that's the rules that you're coming up with, then the commissioners would have had to, would have had to point this project.
Which project? I'm sorry.
Anyone, like the one coming out tonight, any, any.
Correct, and I did have a discussion with Mr. Dermody about that. It's going to have to go before the commission.
Yes, they'd have to prove it.
Correct.
And this is the case even after we believe this is deemed to be lost revenue ARP funding?
That, that is my understanding, yes, to all ARP funds.
That's why I've been trying, you know, with different meetings, to express that opinion. What was heard about that?
I have, I have a question. We get towards October, okay? And we have, let's just say, a million dollars. Can we then say that we are going to pay payroll and apply it to its payroll for a million dollars for the month of November instead of the general fund? I mean.
As long as you go through the appropriate process to get it included in the plan and also appropriate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sender, just double checking, we, since we got the funds, we were giving $10,000 to each of our volunteer fire departments. And we generally, although there's a change in the council, it could be considerable change, we kind of made a general philosophy that we wanted that to extend into '25 and Is it, would it be within your realm of legal?
Yeah.
Expertise that we could, in fact, write a check in January or February of '20?
You're going to answer.
'6, and then write another one in December of '26, as long as it's all gone by December of '26, correct?
Yes.
So if we wanted to fund the volunteer fire department through '27, we could technically do that by giving them two separate checks in '26, one at the beginning for '26, and one at the very end to apply for '27.
Correct, as long as you go through the process. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham, we switched the volunteer firemen over to the public safety lit to make that, so that's where the funding for this year came out of.
Because of the law change.
So I want to call attention.
I have some concern about that, because our public safety lit, like, where's people asking for money out of public safety lit tonight? And I would rather spend the money out of, well, personally, I'm just using that for long range.
Not saying that we couldn't.
Right. I wanted to call attention to that. In prior years, we've made motions of support where we didn't necessarily specify where we planned for that to be paid out of. It was maybe implied or assumed, but it was never actually written down or voted on. We may want to look to see which one of those, which of those items might be coming out of ARP here soon.
Well, since there's no. The other thing is, if we paid out of public safety lit, then I think the volunteer firemen are more likely to think that they're going to get that every year, whereas right now, we know we can get it up to '26 or maybe into '27. But when you're doing public safety lit, we know we're going to get continued public safety lit funds. This was kind of some special money that we had access to, and we, I think everybody here agrees that our volunteer firemen do tremendous amount of good on a very limited budget. You know, when they're having cookie sales and all kinds of fundraisers to try to supplement the programs.
Pancakes.
Pancakes, breakfast, a little bit of everything. I mean, it seems to me that the county as a whole is better because of our volunteer fire departments, and we all agree on that.
Absolutely. Mr. Sender, can I ask for a clarification on the lost revenue?
Yes.
Okay. So the lost revenue funds and the calculation that you did was based on the fact that the county was closed, we had people off of work, we had all those additional expenses during COVID, right?
Yes.
Okay. If, if, so if we meet the lost revenue calculation, isn't that the same as paying back the county for the money that it lost?
Well, again, the definitions out of the federal or the treasury regulations say you can use it for any governmental purpose, so I would interpret your scenario the same way.
Okay, so, but, so the point is, is if you've made the lost revenue calculation, at least for that money or tranche for the lost revenue calculation, hasn't the commission already approved those funds to be funds that the county has lost and has been reimbursed from ARP? And this is the rub that we have, because we've, throughout the couple of years, we've taken ARP funds from the lost revenue side, and we've expended them for expenses for the count, to keep the county going. They've been appropriated, but we've looked at it like the commission has already said because that's the lost, you know, that was the money that the county has lost. So do you see the, that, I think Mr. Gagelski was getting to that also. Do you see the sort of confusion that we might have?
I think it should be made clear in the plan that the commissioners approve, and then it comes before the council, but, you know.
So for instance, if a department, for instance, if the air conditioning went out, the commission would first have to say that this is something that needs to come out of ARP before the council could appropriate that, even though those monies have already been allocated as monies that have been lost by the county? I, I'm just trying.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the plan has necessarily designated all of the revenues as lost revenues, all of the projects as lost revenue.
Well, no, no, so then we've, we've named two different accounts. We have 8950 and 8951.
Well, I think they're now merged.
Right, but for lack of, for, for the way we were dealing with it, you see what I'm saying? We were saying that 8950 are, when we were initially appropriating out of that, that was for things like sewer, water, wastewater, the things that clearly met the, the line items of ARP. And so the other funds, we've always been under the impression that those funds were already earned by the county, for lack of a better, because of the money that the county lost, because of the lost revenue complaint. Do you see, so, so that's where I think there's confusion, confusion amongst all of us.
That's the big question that we need to have legally answered, is I don't think the commissioners have any control over the money anymore.
It's. That, right, that tranche of money, or if it's all of them.
Trust is left.
Right. And I, so I don't.
If you want, I'd be happy to go back and look deeply at that question and come back with an answer.
Right, because I think that's the, that's the.
Either way, just that this is, this was specifically told to us, and I'm, and I'm just trying to follow the, the guidance of the law, and the guidance of the law stated follow the, uh, the guidance of the law, and the guidance of the law stated that. I, I didn't come up with, that's for sure, and because I disagreed with that one, I didn't think, well, who would have thought that the commissioners should be coming up with a project list?
Here's a hypothetical, I think, would answer his question. What if the counties said we lost all this money? Now, we want to put the money in an investment account. What if they wrote a check for the entire amount to an investment account and drew interest for a couple of years?
Yeah, I don't think that's permitted either.
Are you sure it's not permitted?
Well.
Well, I would say that it's not permitted. In this sense, Mr. Cunningham, the whole purpose of that money was to stimulate and support. So if you're going to hoard,
You're gonna have a problem.
Then you're gonna have a problem with the whole purpose of the, you, you know what I mean?
Okay, so we're then back to we can pay payroll, but we can't invest. Well, we did, pretty sure we can make payroll with it.
We did bonuses at the beginning with it.
Correct.
Mr. Yagelski? So ironically, this was not the first time this has happened. Uh, we got money from the toll road, if everybody remembers correctly or don't, but we had money that was, that was, uh, given to county for the toll road with stipulations that were put on it also. So we said, we're not going to honor those, and we put it into a rainy day fund. Coincidentally, that next year, the state of Indiana formed a rainy day fund. So it, so I'm just saying that, I'm not quite sure, because, you know, nobody came after us and said, you shouldn't do it. They were upset they didn't because the, the governor's time wanted everybody to spend that money right then and there, and we said that doesn't serve, serve us a purpose that we wanted to. But again, the state of Indiana did a rainy day fund. So I think that, I don't think that's going to be one of these technicalities are going to come and look at everybody's budgets to the, to the, to what we're talking about. I only brought it up because it was a matter of fact, that's all. If, 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 if we, I'll agree with anything you guys come up with. That's why I just, that's why I keep bringing it up to question, as long as everybody's okay with it.
We, we would ultimately recommend, and Carl, you can comment, as the county's one of two financial advisors, spending down the A R P and letting the monies build up and wind tax, the other ones you primarily use, wind tax and riverboat and, and the general.
That's why the purpose, that's why the purpose, I keep asking that same question over again. I'm agreeing with you, Mr. Stables, that's what, that's what we agree with, and we, I think a lot of the members in this council agree with that.
I would probably underscore the importance of moving quickly on this, because if indeed we do need commissioner approval before every single one of these expenditures, that's going to slow things down considerably, and we might only have six more meetings this year.
If I can interject also, we had, um, a conference, auditor's conference this past week, and this fund and the use of it and the final rules were a big part of that conference, and I'll read to you some of the things it says, a little bit about what you're talking about. There is a big packet that probably includes what you're talking about. This is not that. This was just a PDF. But it's not an appropriation, it's actually an obligation that has to be done before December thirty first. An obligation is a contract, a subaward, and an order placed for property or services, certain interagency agreements, and requirement under federal law or regulation. Older hair. Recipient becomes subject as result of receiving or expending S L R, S L F R F funds. Um, so basically, she said, they said, think about an encumbrance. What you can encumber is what you would be able to consider obligated. It does include legal and administrative costs, reporting and compliance requirements, including separate monitoring, single audit costs, record retention, internal control requirements, property standards, blah, blah, blah. An obligation is not an adopted budget or budget amendment, an appropriation, an executive order, a resolution, a written or oral intention to enter into a contract, a grant of legal authority to enter into a contract claiming funds under the revenue loss category, moving S L F R F funds to a general fund as revenue loss, but not further establishing an obligation with those funds by twelve thirty one forty, twenty four. Revenue loss must be obligated. It says it is an eligible use category. Obligating revenue loss for the payment of government services must be, that's not the correct grammar, but must, um, report the use as projects. And then it says payroll costs for twenty five and twenty six, so twenty four is not on here. But the employee must be serving in a position that was created and filled prior to December twenty first of twenty four. Payroll costs must be used in connection with an eligible use, which I know is in that big packet, but it's not on here. Payroll costs would include salary, wages, covered benefit, and payroll taxes.
So, Mr. Grandma, um, I think that questions are answered, but it's also answered the way you, you had answered the question yourself. The, the, putting money back into lost revenue is not a project. Maybe this particular project that Laporte's talking, but that's a project, and I would, I would treat it as a different way of looking at it, so.
Right, right, and that's what I was, so, because I, because I know that we've used the funds for the sheriff's department and for, you, you know, and so so I, I, I just can't fathom that we would have to go to the commission to say, hey, commission, we need to use these funds to pay the, for sheriff's department. You, you, you know, I, so that seems to be a disconnect to me.
I, I liked the statement you made about the, because we were, we were behind in funds and this, and just basically reimbursing ourselves, and that's fine.
Yeah, so I, and, and I guess that's what we have to try to sort out, if it's possible.
You get back to us on that, Carl?
I will.
Sorry, I'm struggling.
We now know the question.
Yeah.
One more quick question for Mr. Sender, a separate matter, but while you're here, uh, you're in the process of studying the county's group health insurance fund, correct?
We are.
What's the estimated timeline for the completion?
We're still gathering some information yet, so I'm not sure I can really give you a timeline, but hopefully before long.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the budget meeting dates. Um, we had July twenty second and twenty third. It was suggested that we go with the.
To move it a week.
A week later. Is that, was there a reason that we stayed off of the twenty ninth?
Yes, I won't be here that, that, that specific day, I won't be here.
So what if we start on the thirtieth?
Anything else is fine with me.
Are you here on the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Just the twenty ninth?
Yeah, the twenty fifth through the twenty ninth, I won't be here.
It's, it's, it is a fair week.
That's much earlier.
Fair weeks. Are we opposed to the twenty second, twenty third?
The twenty second I have a problem with, and so I didn't care if it was the twenty third and twenty fourth, or I was thinking that it'd just be easier to start on a Monday, because although we usually schedule, we usually do it within two days, but we usually schedule for three, just in case of any.
Thirty first, you're getting into the boat race of Michigan City if we went.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
Twenty third, twenty fourth is fine for me.
Yeah, twenty third, twenty fourth is fine for me.
Same here.
Fourth, as I already seen.
We're, we're done by four o'clock, yeah, anyway.
Or move that.
So twenty third and twenty fourth.
I would just, just because it doesn't make a difference, advertise it anyway, just advertise the twenty fifth, just for.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. Twenty third, twenty fourth. Next item is a capital project plan. We'll have a discussion. Justin?
Yes, um, on Friday last week, I sent you a copy of a draft ordinance I put together for, um, establishing a, uh, framework for how we would create a capital projects plan. This is particularly timely because we're about to go into budget hearings. Um, what I'm seeking to accomplish here, and there's definitely multiple avenues, this could be accomplished either through an ordinance or just through a policy that we're asking the auditor's office to effectuate. We have a lot of departments that have long range projects that they're planning, but those don't always get communicated to us. If departments were better about putting this to paper, sending it to us, we were putting it all in one place, figuring out in the long run where we're going to be spending from, we would probably be able to level out the spending better. We'd know when it's happening, we'd include it in the budget, and we wouldn't need to come back and have them ask for additional appropriations. It would probably lead to smoother outcomes for us. So that's what I'm seeking to accomplish here, is to, to require our departments to be telling us what capital projects or multi-year contracts they might be asking us for in advance.
So coming from industry, I mean, it's very similar to what that is, what goes on there. The one thing that, having now experienced both industry and government, is the fact that we're having to place an order in a one calendar year and then actually receive and, and pay for the purchase the next calendar year or two years down the road. So I'm not sure how well that we can fund something that's going to go multiple calendar years, but I'd, I'd like the, the direction that this is taking. We brought it up at the last budget hearing.
Mr. Yagelski?
I understand your, the, uh, meaning of the, of your, 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 uh, project, but the problem of it is, and I know you have talked about this in the past, um, is that, let's use our December meeting. We, 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 we got rid of the December meeting because all it was, was the spend on money before the end of the year. We did a study here a couple of times. We had two studies came in, or what is your department, we said, they go, we need more employees, we need bigger rooms, we did. Before you know it, we had ten million dollars of study projects that we didn't have. It tends to be a wish list, and it tends not to really do what you, what the, what you really want to do on this project. Biggest thing to have is, is that, again, the, the lead, the lead is that the commissioner should have picked the projects, give us our top ten, and we try to go, well, how can balance those out here? We haven't seen that for a while. That's not my fault, but that's how we usually do it. I just fear that this becomes a, we all need something, you're going to just balloon this thing up to a ten million dollar project.
Certainly no reason for us to, you know, not nick something that comes before us where we're like, you know, that's not a priority for us.
I've been doing this, it's a fear of it, so. All of a sudden, now you got ten million, and everybody's going to think now they're going to get a lot of stuff done, they're going to be able to do all this stuff, when we can't do that. I mean, I do work in the industry too, so I understand that.
Yeah. Okay. I wouldn't put this as an ordinance, but I would definitely go with a policy. So the, this way that we're trying to establish something, what we're trying to do, you know, we've discussed this with our department heads in previous years, last year, this year, and, um, and every year, projects are going to change. But again, this is going to need to be a capital improvements, not for additional personnel. So maybe that restriction may help some, and, and I, I hear what you're saying. It's, it's the same thing we just witnessed the big changeover in E nine one one, um, but we didn't know it was really coming, and then all of a sudden it just happened. And that, that's just one example of, of what we went through last year, and even at the start of this year, there went four hundred and something thousand dollars, boom, gone.
For the contract, yeah.
For the contract, which was approved last year. We have, uh, trucks coming in for highway department that are taking your ambulances, uh, you know, the vehicles, it's just constant, and so, I mean, those items that we, the sheriff's vehicles aren't a regular maintenance program, that's fine, but we didn't have the, um, the highway department's trucks or other department's vehicles, and it would be nice if we started getting them on some sort of system, like we started getting the computers on a system. So that's the type of things that I, I think we're really trying to accomplish and not have these super big project lists. Now, certainly, I love the idea of the, if the commissioners, uh, would love to put together, you know, the top five to ten items, and, you know, uh, you know, but then we, we have a flood project and not enough insurance money to cover it or whatever, and, you know, we have to work with it, but those are part of the challenges of what we face, and that's going to continue to happen. So just by putting it in place doesn't mean it's going to be a perfect model, but.
That's what that said.
Mr. Go back if I could.
Yes.
Trying to word this very carefully, but the bottom of the page for me was, as I went through agenda over the last couple of days, is we're approving transfers left and right, because they're not asking for additional money. And as you know, I'm a boat and nail on every additional appropriation, because I'm very concerned about the end of the year. But on today's agenda, we have about five hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars worth of transfers. So the department heads are saying, all right, we can take money out of this account to cover us for right now. What I foresee happening is, we're going to budget in July, and then in September, October, November, all this money that's been transferred out of accounts that were really needed, it's, they're all going to come in and say, well, I'm out of money. Now I need money. Now I need an additional appropriation. I have tremendous fear of that, because either that's the case, or we've over budgeted to our department heads by about six million dollars. Because if you take this and multiply it out times twelve months, and you, for the last three or four months, we've done transfers like crazy. We're going to do the same thing tonight. They don't take very long. But the truth of the matter is, at some point in time, we've got to pay the piper, and if everybody comes in at about the same time after our budget hearings and says, well, you know, I spent my money from this account to cover me for this way back in March. Mr. Yagelski's been here longer than I have, but we never saw requests for additional appropriations in February and March like we did this year.
Where's that ever seen?
It's, it's never been even close.
But, uh, the only thing I will say to that is, a lot of those are bookkeeping things that the auditor's office is doing. Is that correct to say?
I would never use that wording by any means, but.
So my wording might not be perfect, so.
It's things required by law, but yes, it could be, uh, within their own funds. Is that what you mean?
So it's, it's more of the transfers, the appropriation of, 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 of donation funds, which we hadn't done in the past. So a lot of these things that we're doing this year, we hadn't done in the past. Is that?
Yes, we've never done it correctly, correct.
I'm not saying good or bad or wrong.
I agree with that, but by the same token, it's that department's pool of money, no matter where it comes from, whether it's tax money or donations.
You would want to know what it's being transferred from, and if they've thought about if they needed it, I think that'd be important.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
And then that's my concern is as we go forward.
All right. So what's your discussion on, how do you want to handle this capital project for the, what's your pleasure?
I, I have a, a problem with moving forward with putting something in place today, because we literally just got it on a holiday weekend on Friday night. So, you know, if, if we can just push it to next month and then have it, have everybody have a better chance to review it, I don't see a lot of things wrong with it, but I don't, I, I don't like just jamming something, and I feel like I'm jamming something through and not feeling comfortable with it, and I.
Motion to table for one month.
Second. Motion to table in a second. All those in favor, there's no discussion on table. All those in favor of tabling for one month?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Those opposed? Motion passes to table. Next item is appropriation transfers and request. Laporte County voter registration requesting a transfer within the general fund, their fund, the office supplies, an amount of twenty dollars.
Motion to approve. All right, I'll second.
Which one?
This one here. Moving from office supplies.
Motion by a lot of people.
It's going to take a lot of twenty dollars to get to five hundred and seventy eight thousand.
They can afford to do that. They've thought about it.
Twenty dollars at a time. That was the easy one. Should have put that one last. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's an increase in dues, by the way, in case anyone keep track. Laporte County prosecutor requesting to transfer within the prosecutor's pre-trial and deferral fund in the amount of ten thousand dollars for part-time, five thousand dollars for victim advocate and supply, or to supplies and miscellaneous claims to other supplies in the amount of fifty five thousand to sixteen.
I think Mr. Fagan's on, on Zoom.
Mr. Fagan, you have anything you want to add?
That, that's his money. It's from the deferral fund.
It's the vote. I'm just curious as to what is being spent for seventy thousand dollars on the other, other supplies.
That's fine.
No, it was, no, so basically, it's because the, uh, we were not using the ten thousand, the five thousand, and then the fifty five thousand is from our miscellaneous claims. So because that's getting shut down at the end of this month by the auditor's office, we're moving it over to two hundred to that, to the newly designated two hundred account within the one, two, three, and four series that's been set up for claims. So it's just pulling all the money there.
We have a motion approved by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Karanka. Is there any other questions or comments? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prosecutor.
He's still up.
He's still up.
You're still up. Next item is requesting appropriation. This is a reimbursement grant.
It is, and they received the reimbursement, so now they just need to appropriate it back, yeah.
So they received the reimbursement of forty three thousand seventeen ninety one, and we just need to reappropriate that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham on the first one. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The second reimbursable grant is for sixty two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Any questions on this one? Any none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Now we're up to a hundred and seventy five thousand, twenty dollars. Okay.
Laporte County Circuit Court requesting appropriation from their domestic relations for professional services in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and capital purchases in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Basic budgeting.
Pardon me?
Basic budgeting.
Basic budgeting.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. Any questions? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is the Park Department requesting an additional appropriation from riverboat wind tax or A R P purchase of a mower in the amount of seventy five hundred and thirty nine dollars.
Motion to approve out of A R P.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of A R P. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Want to give a quick?
Yeah, so I got a, the mower total cost, I got a couple quotes, but the total cost was fifteen thousand thirty nine dollars. I got a donation for seventy five hundred. Uh, and then. Uh, and then, uh, the, the old mower is, is, uh, FMEC is wanting to purchase that for three thousand, so, so I don't know where that money's going, the three thousand, so, so really what I need is only four thousand three, five hundred and thirty-nine because that three thousand's going in there.
So we, I guess it's the council's pleasure or the auditor's pleasure, do, do you want the check from FMEC, which the mower's gonna be at the fairgrounds, it's not for FMEC? Because the reason this mower is a hundred and some inches.
Yeah, it's a hundred and four inches wide, it has two fold-out bags, it's really too big for the parts.
But it's ideal for the fairgrounds. So is it a pleasure that FMEC writes a check to the vendor to save on that? Or do you want the check to go to the auditor's office, and then we would have to reappropriate that money back into whichever, six one, half a dozen the other?
Yeah, whatever is easiest.
Let FMEC write the check to the vendor and make this four thousand.
If, if, the, if the check from FMEC can go directly to the vendor, and then the county only write a check for four thousand five hundred and thirty-nine.
And we can say not exceed seventy-five thirty-nine right now.
Okay, well then do that.
So I'm gonna change it to not exceed, um, seventy-five thirty-nine, and this way, that could be worked out.
Okay.
And then you'll let me know the vendor that you picked, because there was down to two?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
That's good, good. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Laporte County.
Nope, nay.
Right.
I love Jeremy, I think he's one of our outstanding.
Earl, when you say, I.
Well, it's an additional appropriation.
I know, I know.
Okay.
We, we.
Kinda spend the money.
Kinda knew that.
Motion to approve the next one because it's not an additional appropriation.
The Port County Park Department is to transfer with a non-reverting fund, uh, they had the leaky roof out at, um, Red Mill?
Yeah, Red Mill.
Red Mill, and they, they went ahead and got it fixed, and it's eighty-eight hundred and forty dollars.
Earl already made the motion, I'll second.
Earl made the motion. Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Laporte County Clerk requesting an appropriation from the Clerk's perpetuation fund for supplies, the amount of five thousand.
Motion to approve because it's got over three hundred thousand dollars in that account.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Laporte County Animal Shelter requesting appropriation from Riverboat Wind Tax or ARP for part-time in the amount of twenty-five thousand. I explained to several council members this morning that due to the fact that, uh, the shelter is currently short, um, our veterinarian service at the shelter, that, uh, that part-time people are having to shuttle, um, animals around to different facilities to get everything done, and so it's, it's driven up the cost of, of part-time.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat, because Riverboat has over four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of Riverboat.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka, is there any other questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
Then we got one more.
Okay.
Requesting appropriation from animal shelter donation for other services and charges, and it's coming out of your donation fund, the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty-six cents.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And, and just to note, that's a lot because of the vet fees. Okay? I just wanna make sure everybody knows, because it, it's not clear, so.
Yes, with the number of animals we have in this year, yes, it's. Plus the number, like you said, the number of animals is up, I should've mentioned that too, so.
Mm-hmm.
No. Keep up the work, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Laporte County Adult Probation requesting an appropriation from Superior Four Transfer Fee Fund for transporting of probationers.
Motion to approve, because there's over seven thousand dollars in that account.
Second. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yagowski. Hearing any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Requesting an appropriation from Laporte County Probation Supplemental Funds, uh, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars for computers, fifteen hundred and sixty-two dollars for laptops, video and audio equipment for seven hundred and forty-eight dollars, and courtroom chairs in the amount of thousand forty-nine. I could, I, go ahead, I know the question.
So, um, what courtroom are you using for courtroom chairs?
This is Laporte Circuit Court.
Why do they need chairs?
Why do they need chairs?
Why do the court need chairs?
Yeah.
The juvenile magistrate needs new chairs for the courtroom, the current chairs are out of date and are worn beyond repair. Courtroom chairs can be purchased for approximately two hundred and eight dollars each from Kemp's.
Okay, I thought we had replaced all the courtroom chairs already, but if you say no.
I, I don't believe the magistrate courtroom apparently was, had, had all their chairs replaced.
Okay, motion to approve, because there's over four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in that fund.
I'm fine, I just wanna try to figure what that is, and so.
And that's coming out of probation fees.
Right, motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is building. Thank you.
Quick clear, clarification, what was the reason that the, the third request got removed before?
Because of the advertise, it was an advertise.
It was advertised for o- other personal services, not for payroll.
Okay.
That's why, and so we'll just clean it up.
We'll do it next.
Other personal services is payrolls. But the account will be negative if it's not paid, so we wouldn't be able to pay it.
It's been negative for four months, and we just noticed it?
Alright.
It hasn't been negative for four months.
Have a conversation with Mr. Guy.
I can give you a ledger if you'd like.
Have a conversation, please.
No, I don't need a ledger.
Please send it to me, have a, please have a conversation with Guy, if we need to add it back on the agenda by the end of the meeting. But if you guys could have a little sidebar over there and figure out what we need to do. Thank you. Next item is Laporte County Building Maintenance requesting additional appropriation from Wind Tax, Riverboat or ARP for the complex basement sewer repair in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. I think everybody's aware, we did a, uh, a vote on this, and this is the final bill, so. The motion to support, right, that's what it was. Right. So is that a motion to pay?
No.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
You wanna take?
Out of ARP.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum made over, out of ARP.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka, any other questions or comments on that one?
Just a quick comment, um, I know early on, we worked on this, and it was kinda at the early part of your ten years department head. The cleaning up of how these, um, there, the proposals were sent out and how the bids came in, uh, was good cooperation between the two of us, along with, uh, the commissioners, just to, to make sure that we had a good, well-defined project for something like this, so that we had clean bids to judge, so, thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Where did it come from?
ARP.
ARP.
Alright. Earl's still up. Laporte County Building Maintenance requesting the following transfers. Transfer from miscellaneous receipts to air handler due to reimbursement, twenty-six hundred and seven dollars. The next item is transfer miscellaneous receipts building to building repairs due to reimbursement. The next one is transfer to miscellaneous receipts to electrical due to reimbursements. So the total is twenty-six hundred and seven dollars and eighty-one cents, four hundred and three dollars and seventy-five cents, and one hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Laporte County Planner requesting appropriation from Cune Bridge. Match Bridge one eighty-nine in the amount of seventy thousand thir- three hundred and thirteen dollars. And Bridge forty-six, Matt, Mitch?
Mitch, yeah.
Mitch?
Good evening.
Bear with me.
That's right.
The name or address of the bridge need to go on here.
Okay.
Next to the numbers.
You don't have the numbers memorized?
So, uh, one eighty-nine, we'll start that one, it's, uh, twenty-three hundred south. Uh, roughly an eighth of a mile east of US four twenty-one, south of La Crosse.
He included that in your packet as well on his request, we made sure it was there.
Okay, but, well, as you know, I became.
No assistance or witness.
Okay. For one eighty-nine and forty-six, I came before you, I think, last November. And told you I was going to apply for bridge replacement funds, group four, if you end that. And in no, this January, I was awarded, uh, the one point eight for Bridge forty-six and two point two for one eighty-nine. So, um, part of that application was a commitment letter that if I was awarded, the council would, would cover the twenty percent. And what you have tonight is twenty percent of PE and right-of-way services for each of those projects.
Mr. President, motion to approve both, uh, amounts seventy thousand through thirteen forty and seventy-eight thousand five sixty-six, um, out of Cune Bridge.
And I second it because it's nine hundred, it's over nine hundred thousand dollars in the Cune Bridge account.
I agree.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum.
I will have to come before you, probably like two or three years, because for the inspection and the, um, the construction funds, the matching funds on that as well.
Question for Mr. Bishop, um, do you feel confident that the revenue's coming in to, uh, this was coming out of which bridge, from Cune Bridge? Are they sufficient to cover this in future years?
More, most definitely.
Okay.
Yeah. This is, as you know, these projects usually take, a bridge usually takes four or five years, a rural bridge, from letting to construction. Sometimes six, but usually four or five, so.
Right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Yeah.
Next request additional appropriation from Lit Economic Development for the match for grant for Laporte County Comprehensive Update, in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars.
Right, as, as you know, um, county will be receiving a grant for a hundred and forty-four thousand. And this is a twenty percent match, that, this is our twenty-year policy plan. As you know, we had a joint, um, county-wide ordinance, it was with the two cities. They broke off recently, Michigan City a couple of years ago, I believe Laporte's starting their comprehensive plan right now. So this was something that needed to be done, it was, uh, originally adopted in oh nine. Usually you do an update every ten, fifteen years, so the county is in need of this, and it's required to have a zoning ordinance. We have to, uh, plan for our growth and development, and this is the document that does that. So with NERTS's help, um, we would be responsible for twenty percent of that cost, which is, uh, thirty-six thousand. And we'd probably be commencing the project in October, uh, fourth quarter of this year.
Great, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I like.
Second.
And I was gonna, it's okay, but I'm gonna suggest that we take it out of Lit Economic Development, because that's the spirit of economic development.
I agree.
Okay, that's the only thing I was gonna make the motion, but I'm glad that you guys did.
Motion by Mr. Karanka, second by Mr. Rosenbaum.
I thought it was in stereo.
Did you make that?
Might've beat him a little bit.
Oh, he definitely.
Alright, we'll give it to Justin. An amount of thirty-six thousand dollars. All those in favor, say aye? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, would you be willing to consider working with some of the small communities in southern Laporte County? I'm thinking La Crosse, Wantotah, Westville, and, and as you develop this plan, a lot of those communities help set the tone and the direction for the unincorporated areas around them.
Yeah, and, and we had a discussion before the meeting, and actually, when we did the, the, uh, comprehensive plan in two thousand nine, it was adopted. Um, I went to Westville and, at that time, I think also, uh, Wantotah. And, um, both of the communities wanted to remain autonomous and do their own thing, but it's, uh, fifteen years later now, so it's definitely worth fourteen, whatever, so it's worth doing it.
And even if they write their own grants, there's a coordination level.
Yep.
That's very useful and helpful for the entire.
Definitely, yeah, so, so, yeah, I could, I'll, I'll work on that.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next i- item is Laporte County Courts requesting appropriation from the Jury Pay Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum.
And I just wanna say, that's the exact amount that's supposedly in that fund.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Laporte County Sheriff's Department requesting appropriation from Mr. Mina Fund for backup batteries for door fobs and cameras, washer dryer purchase, uh, one is for eleven thousand four hundred and eighty, and the other one is for twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-seven.
Motion to approve, uh, the forty thousand of seventeen point one five out of the, uh, because there's over eighty-one thousand dollars in that account.
Correct, and that's say an account that we get a stipend from every year from the state for approximately sixty-nine thousand.
Second by Mr. Rob Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is requesting appropriation from the K nine grant, reimbursement grant, other supplies, um, other services and charges and capital purchases totaling twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-one and fifty cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Karanka.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham.
I, I have a question, because I, I didn't see it, uh, maybe I missed it, but how much is in the grant itself, was it?
The total grant awarded was approximately a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm good.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is requesting appropriation reimbursement grant for the Marine Patrol for payroll, overtime, and deductions totaling ten thousand five hundred.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question for the sheriff, before he sits down, if I may. Um, previously, we determined that the sheriff's pension was underfunded by, or underbudgeted by about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Will you be seeking an additional appropriation to clear that up?
Yeah, I already spoke to Commissioner Novak and the auditor's office about that, to get an exact number. That exact number was given, I believe, to the auditor's office last week, so it's probably gonna be in the next month or so.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Definitely, thank you. Next item is the Laporte County Board of Commissioners requesting additional appropriation from Wind Tax, ARP, or, uh, Riverboat. And this is for invoices for SEH, Maximus, Baker Tilly, and Nyheart, totaling seventy-five thousand dollars.
So, the question was in the packet, we didn't have all that in, some of these names aren't supposed to be on here?
No, I, I, I reviewed all those invoices, because there, there was something. Those are all having to do, uh, with vendors for the auditor's office. One of them does the TIF information, the information for TIF, the other one, you know, so they each do their own role, so those are, yeah, the, yeah.
So, as I reviewed the packet, it could look like SEH had a total of sixty thousand oh twenty-two and twenty-five cents. And then there was one from Maximus for eleven thousand two hundred even. Nothing from Baker Tilly, nothing from Nyheart. Uh, are we presuming that that extra, call it thirty-eight hundred, is what's outstanding to these other two?
That's all the information they gave us, so I'm not sure, I just wrote down what they sent in.
What do those two total?
Seventy-one thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Well, I, I could tell you that the Nyheart bill and Baker Tilly bills were more than that, so I don't. I can't give you the exact amounts, but I did see them at some point in time.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the additional appropriation out of, I mean, have a preference, ARP, Riverboat.
Well, it, it could be ARP, uh, but, you know, I'm trying to figure out, I wouldn't do River, I, you know, where it's the spirit of where we would take it from, Riverboat has more money in it, but if we keep going off of Riverboat, we just keep deleting them.
I'll go for, with ARP for the moment, someone's, I'm open to a friendly amendment here. Uh, but with the caveat that these items be, we figure out how much these contracts cost, split them out from the commissioner's budget and make a line item in the auditor's budget, so they're specifically budgeted for that office, just like we would for any professional services like this for other departments.
Are they jointly used?
No.
Between?
No, the, I believe, Mr. Stables can talk to this, but I think these are all for auditor's work.
Why are they in his?
It's always been, it's, we have paid through commissioners' personal services, you'll have to determine that at budget. Through commissioners' personal services, you'll have to determine that at budget. It, it works well, it goes through one central point.
Traditionally, since they pay the contracts, they're, they're done through their budget. Exception, I'm sorry.
They had the professional services in their budget.
Right, because we didn't know. But, but yeah, Maximus is the, you know, we did, it's eleven thousand dollars, but they're the agency that gets us a hundred and forty thousand dollars with the reimbursement for our allocation of forty costs, and they interface with the auditor's office, so we're kind of the ones that procure the contract. Nyheart oversees our pension benefits reporting requirements. That really should be in the auditor's office, I mean, our, our gap reporting costs, Baker Tilly's work, that's, that's budgeted through the auditor's office. I think the Nyheart should be budgeted.
But that's on the financial reporting, you know, Baker Tilly's portion, and I'm not sure what the E D, uh whatever the S E H was referring to.
I think the short answer to Councilman Keel's question is it is something that should be looked at in the, in the, during the budget hearings.
Okay.
So your motion is to take it out of A R P, Justin?
Yeah, pound of A R P and then consider splitting this when we get to budget.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Keel, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Is it two nays?
There, there's two down there, I guess, yeah. The next item is request an additional appropriation from Rainy Day, um Riverboat or Complex Air, or A R P, for the complex flood renovation for six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. This money was appropriated last year and was not encumbered over. So it is, it is. It is money that was previously appropriated, didn't spend it all, did not get encumbered. So now we need to reappropriate this balance, six hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-nine, eighty-five dollars.
Where was it appropriated from last year?
I believe A R P, wasn't it?
I have circled Rainy Day.
It was part of the, it was part of the unused portion, it was the unused portion of their appropriation total.
Right.
Motion to approve out of the Rainy Day Fund.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions or comments on that one?
Yeah, Mr. Di Martino, could you give us an idea on where are we at with the likelihood of being reimbursed for these expenses? And how much more are we anticipating we'll spend for the duration of this project?
Yeah, so I'm gonna ask for a workshop, uh you're gonna have to give up, you're gonna have to, Mr. Cunningham, listening to this, please, do you need a nitroglycerin tablet? You are gonna have to appropriate another four million dollars to get this project done. Four million dollars, Mr. Cunningham, in order to get the project done.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean that.
Reimbursed in the long run. Four million dollars.
I don't know what a nitroglycerin tab, tablet is, but I need one too.
You're too young, ask Mr. Karanka.
Alright, Cold War. Any other questions or comments on that one?
And that's legit, I'm not.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Next item is request appropriation from Riverboat Wind Tax, this is Anthem's final bill, this was our dental provider last year. And uh this is to close out that account.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of Riverboat.
That was advertised wrong.
Sir, a second?
Second.
What caused this bill for Anthem, because we don't provide any uh coverage for employees for dental? What was the cause of this bill, because we don't pay anything towards the contributions for dental?
The only assumption is that previous problem where people were on the uh people were on the insurance but weren't working here, so it wasn't being deducted or vice versa. But it goes back to at least twenty-one, from twenty-one till now, uh this is the difference after they credited back three to six months of.
I would like that um as, see if the council will be willing to table this until next month and have our attorney contact Anthem and see if they can negotiate this.
To motion to table.
Quick question on this, because we have most voted against, should be attorney or should be the commissioners? Well, I think it needs to be. I'll, I'll, I'll get with Mr. Page regarding that, I was still waiting for that list.
I, I had asked several times that our attorney to review this list before we.
Scotty's on Zoom, I'll get with Scotty and one of us will reach out.
Motion to table?
I, I'm amending my motion to table.
Motion table is by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? And then we'll put that on next month's agenda. Hopefully with the amount we got to sell it. Lepore County Council requesting a transfer from Attorney's Account one oh one four two to Professional Services, three oh one three five to cover expenditures above the retainage fee for Professional Services. How is this council?
It's in your budget. It's your, Mr. Di Martino's bill and the Wagner, Irwin and Shealy, you had the training, so that came out of there. So that's in your budget, is that what you mean? And the only thing you have budgeted for Professional Services is the retainer fees. So the charges over and above.
Got it.
Motion approved.
Got it. Motion by Mr. Karanka.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keel. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Next item is request additional appropriation from Riverboat Wind Tax or A R P, it's actually an A R P request from Lepore County Housing Development, the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Poor, poor Mayor Dermody, the chairman must not like him to put him away at the end of the meeting.
Chairman, yeah.
I was shocked to find that we were last on the agenda. But it is great to be here in front of the county council, you've had a long meeting, um I think we have a presentation that I'd like to walk through. And I know, like you, like many of the city councils, county councils across the state, the nation, you're fighting what we heard today. Struggles financially, I hope you recognize, um or have the opportunity to recognize when you take a step back and you look what's in front of Lepore County, the city of Michigan City, and the city of Lepore. There's tremendous opportunity coming, and uh that's why I'm here to talk about maybe stepping back for a bigger picture. And more importantly, a new day for Lepore County, uh working collaboratively to address the housing shortage facing uh our local communities. Uh and I'm gonna walk through this, obviously, no secret, uh national dilemma, United States uh across the board is uh struggling with housing, we see it here locally. Uh but as you can see on a national basis, six and a half million homes needed our, uh the gap between twenty-twelve and twenty-twenty-two. And we're not exempt, the state of Indiana, Lepore County, city of Lepore, um vibrant communities uh with Lepore County. Obviously, they saw that fifty-seven hundred net new units of all types, and that's, I think, is key, of all types are needed in Lepore County. And a need for cooperation, part of that vibrant community discussion was alignment between city and county officials, which has been lacking, and I don't think anybody would deny that. Um there's obviously work that can be done to work together and looking at new funding tools and municipal revenues which are needed. Uh Health Foundation of Lepore, obviously, they see specific in the city of Lepore, and some of you participated in the charrette with Notre Dame, uh but you see seven hundred and fifty rental units, nine hundred for sale units in the city of Lepore. And based on findings uh and the measures, we have decided a few years ago, in fact, day one uh on identifying opportunities of housing, which included the old Timma Bakery, which we now see Habitat for Humanity building their second home, and how are we going to attack this housing issue? One house at a time, one home at a time, the banks, luxury apartments, completely filled. Maple Commons, which is across from the Y M C A, where we saw twenty-six years of uh police fire calls, issues, unsafe behaviors. Um now look, thriving, filled, and a great opportunity. Ivy Flats, which is housing opportunities for those that have um needs with mental health illnesses. Um physical illness or physical issues with wraparound services on site. People talk about needing uh support and options for those in the low income or those with mental health until we did something, and then the public came out and opposed, but it's the right thing. Eighteenth Street Town Home, Steiner Homes, the number one builder uh in Lake Quarter in Lepore. First time ever Steiner Homes is building something more than a one-off home, uh and in really in the last thirty years uh the first time in the city of Lepore, somebody other than a local builder by the name of Mitch Ficus is building homes in our community. And we have is invested with a variety of dollars, uh fifteen million on these critical initiatives. So we're not finished, you've heard, Park Street Project, uh this is a project that's thirty-five million overall private investment. Hundred and fifty-six units of attainable housing, thirteen single families, ninety-five townhomes, fifty-two multifamily apartments. And you see that rent range right there of family apartments, uh people have said, no one will pay that. Uh we've seen where the banks, they're paying it every day and they're filled. And then Mitch Ficus, uh to continue his uh eighth portion of development, another twenty-one units of attainable housing, and this will be by itself two point four million total investment by the city in water, sewer, infrastructure between both projects. And again, what's good for the city is good for the county and vice versa. Uh obviously, we have a very large, one of the largest announcements coming uh in the next week. Uh that will be one of the biggest in the state of Indiana, and uh where are people gonna live? Where are people gonna live when Amazon finishes their development? Where are people uh with the automotive manufacturer in New Carlisle, where are those people going to live? We've seen where the city of Lepore is going to uh be a prime location for these individuals which is in Lepore County to live and drive seven to eight miles uh to work. In fact, Commissioner Haney said, uh the development of the Park Street uh during the election year said, look, I was the only one that supported in the Plan Commission to bring that developer to Rolling Prairie. Well, now you got a second bite at the apple, that developer is now coming into the city of Lepore, which is, we are part of the county. The city of Lepore is part of the county, and again, when you see all these manufacturers coming before us, we have a unique opportunity to partner and work to uh address the problem together. And so what we're asking for, and let me be clear, it'll be easy to turn, say no, look away. I understand your concerns, we believe you have four million dollars in ARP funds. We believe if you put a half a million dollars of those ARP dollars towards investment in our future, towards invest, investment to allowing people somewhere to live. Obviously, I think you did six million dollars in infrastructure in Michigan City, and you're turning that infrastructure over. What we're saying is, we're only asking for five hundred thousand, less than a twenty-five percent of the overall investment here. Seventy-five percent we're gonna put in from the city, but it truly is an opportunity for a new day for all of us to work together. This project will continue on, whether you, again, say no today or support it, we are gonna move forward. Um but I would like, and I know it's been long, but Bert Cook, Craig Phillips, Laura Kinesny uh would like to come up and just add a few uh comments to this, and then we'll be glad to answer all and every question. So I think Laura Kinesny was gonna come forward, city councilwoman, uh and more importantly, a uh successful Realtor in Lepore County.
Well, good evening.
Evening.
I certainly appreciate your time, and I'll make this brief, um I just wanted to give a, a little snapshot of market conditions within um it hyperlocal, you hear a lot on the news, you see studies, but how real is that? Um this uh, the, the first data that I'd like to present to you, um a, a, and again, as uh Mayor Dermody alluded to, I am a councilwoman for the city of Lepore, uh but my main time, uh my full time position uh is that of a Realtor here specifically in Lepore County specializing in residential sales. Uh a snapshot for the zip code four six three five zero for the month of April of twenty twenty-four. All this data, by the way, is being pulled from uh N I R A, which is the Northwest Indiana uh Region Association of Realtors. Um a, a couple of things I'd like to highlight, uh in April of twenty twenty-four, the absorption rate, what an ex, exorption rate is is if homes, uh if no further homes came on the market, starting tomorrow moving forward, we have two point three months worth of inventory. And then there would be nothing available, uh that's across the whole zip code of four six three five zero, uh all dollar amounts. Uh the average sales price in April of twenty-four is two hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars. Uh and year-to-date for twenty twenty-four is three hundred and two thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. There's been a long uh conception that um, you know, home prices, uh they, there's no doubt that they're uh certainly accelerating. Um but three hundred thousand now is within reach of the, the, the average constituent here in Lepore. Uh to break it down more specifically, I know that we're asking for these funds for two developments that have higher price tags, or at least perceived higher price tags. Um if we just zeroed in from the end of um, end of March, uh so March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four until May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. If we uh looked at homes between three hundred and five hundred thousand that were up for sale, um that absorption rate is less than two months. Um over this two-month span, uh there have been nineteen homes that are closed, and there are twenty-nine that are available uh to be purchased. Of these homes, um the, the average is about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, uh and on the high end it's four eighty-nine nine. So still within the parameters of both developers' um projects. And then finally, I'd just like to bring to your attention, I'm sure that uh these projects have come before, then Commissioner uh Haney touched on it earlier. Uh Century Communities is a national uh production builder uh that has infiltrated Lepore County. Uh from May of twenty-nine, uh May, May of twenty twenty-three until uh May of twenty twenty-four. Uh they have uh closed forty-seven homes in Lepore County. Uh with that being uh an average uh home price of two ninety-six, two eighty-six, and the high end of three seventy-one. Um it, it's a very fine builder, but this is basic builder-grade amenities uh that are being provided within the home. Um and both uh the Ficus Development and then Hunter's Woods uh would uh offer a semi-custom to custom with elevated finishes. So with that being said, I just wanted to give you a snapshot as to uh the, the true need within Lepore County. Any questions in regards to the data? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, good evening, uh Craig Phillips, uh Community Development and Planning Director for the city. I just want to reinforce a couple of points, um that have kind of been already been made quickly by the mayor, but um as you're probably already aware and have already seen and participated in this, um municipal investment in infrastructure to facilitate housing development has become a very common type of investment to further stimulate the local economy in communities all across the state. Um and in addition to that, uh both the countywide housing study that was done in conjunction with Unity Foundation through the Vibrant Communities effort and the Health Foundation of Lepore's housing study for the city of Lepore, both indicated a significant need for housing um across the spectrum of all types of housing and at all income levels, uh and these projects will help to fulfill this need at several levels. So just kind of wanted to reinforce those points as part of the um process and as the project manager for housing-related projects for the city um as part of this.
Thank you.
Good evening to the county council, Bert Cook, Executive Director of the Lepore Economic Advancement Partnership. Uh I, obviously, your meeting is running long, and I will be brief and try not to repeat anything that's been said already, but um I often get the chance to stand in front of bodies like yours and speak to economic development projects. In fact, you know, tonight you were considering an abatement in just such a project. And oftentimes, the discussion comes back to, we're creating jobs, but where do these people live? Uh and we unfortunately see these, we export these people to other communities that have either better or, or more advanced residential markets. So the city of Lepore, I know you all and, and, and your counterparts on the commission, uh recognize this need throughout Lepore, Lepore County, the city of Lepore, Michigan City, and uh, and we're all doing our best to address those needs. Um the projects that we're, we're looking at, that we're presenting to you tonight, I think are an easy example of a way we can do that in partnership one another with one another. Um I know you hear it, because we do too, the, the general public asks us to work together, to find ways as elected bodies and, and those department heads to, to work in conjunction with one another, to do a better job cooperating. Uh I think this is a really perfect example of how we can do exactly that, uh work together to solve an issue that, that is obviously plaguing all of us. Um you know, Mayor mentioned it, but this project originally began in Rolling Prairie, and that wasn't the right opportunity for them. We were quick to, to connect. Prairie, and that wasn't the right opportunity for them. We were quick to, to connect with the developer to say, you know, it may not have been right in Rolling Prairie, but we think we can find a place in the city of LaPorte to make a development like this happen. And for Mitch Ficus's project, Mitch has done a great job of, of developing within the city of LaPorte. We want to continue that as well. City of LaPorte has a really strong track record when it comes to developments like this. In fact, we used ARP funds on Maple City Commons, which the mayor mentioned. I think that's been a big success for us, turning one of the worst properties in our city into a great option for people to live, kind of close to the center of the city of LaPorte. The banks is another example. That's been a big win for us as well. And I have no doubt that the two projects that we've presented to you are going to follow a similar path. You know, Matt Reardon, your Economic Development Director, and I talk often and work together. I don't want to put words in Matt's mouth by any means, but I think through those conversations, I think we both share the sentiment that working on projects like this together pushes us all further. And it's a really good example of what we can do and what we can accomplish when we do work together. So I know you've, you're going to have discussion, you've had a lot of discussion around appropriations tonight already, but would really encourage you to take a hard look at this and seize this opportunity, because it is an easy example of how we can work together to, to solve at least one of the issues that are plaguing all of LaPorte County. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. I would just like to add, you know, we started with the council because we're not legal. But what we can tell you is, from ARP funds, you're the true deciders of whether this passes or not. These funds would be used for water sewer infrastructure. It's not the first time. I don't see it being the last time that the county and city work together. We do it currently. Jerry Jackson, our wastewater head superintendent, works every day helping the county and working together. And this is just an opportunity where these dollars could be used to do infrastructure, to address housing of all types, that can address even the Harrison Electric. Three people that will need housing, and we want them to stay here in LaPorte County. That's one home at a time. And twenty-five percent of this project would come from the county. We would appreciate your support of just saying, yes, we support taking it in front of the commission. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, or our team can.
Mr. Rosalba. We talked about the pricing of the homes, and there's one hundred and seventy-seven units, if I've counted them correctly roughly. I don't know what the average household income's going to be for these homes. Is there any guess? Because if you're going to be costing three hundred, say three hundred thousand dollars just to afford that, what type of, what type of economics, I mean, what type of income are these people going to have to have? I mean, I'd use the guesstimate of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per household, but I don't know the numbers, and I'm hoping you have better numbers.
So part of the, part of the reason we came up with these two projects is because they represent varying types of housing. So you have the senior living type, single-family home that Mitch Ficus typically builds. You've got single-family homes on the higher end, as well as townhomes and apartments over, spread over four buildings. So we're working in tandem with the developers to try and meet as aggressive of a price point as we possibly can, understanding that it costs a lot of money to build a home in today's world. The hope is that as interest rates come down, cost of construction comes down, that ultimately the price point will, will follow suit, and we think that will be the case. But those developers don't, they, they're not able to wait, right? We have to sign our agreements with today's standards or today's, the market that exists in today's world. So, but as far as your question, I don't know that there's, I can't give you an income number, but I would tell you that we believe throughout, through the spectrum of homes that are to be built in both these developments, that these will apply to many different people at many different price points.
The reason why I'm trying to come with, come up with an average, because if I use an average of a hundred thousand dollars, and just hear me out, that's, that comes out to be another seventeen, over almost eighteen million dollars in payroll. Okay? We have a local income tax, which we all share, and that would bring three hundred, that would bring two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars back on an annual basis, which would more than reimburse us on a half a million dollars in two years. If I use the average of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it comes out to three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year, which we're talking about a return in less than a year and a half. But I don't, so I don't know what number to use. I see this as a good situation, just on, and I'm not even talking about what happens to real estate taxes, and how it might lower other people's, we have a bigger base. You know, I don't, you know, we're not even talking about that part of it. And I'm just trying to keep it simple, where I, something that I can identify.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm asking those.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, Councilman Rosalba. And I, and I would tell you, I don't have the number in front of me, but I could tell you, you know, we use, typically you use as a rule of thumb, you know, people should be paying less than thirty percent of their overall income on housing. You can obviously back into the number that way. But I would, I would also stress to you that, I mean, I agree with you in terms of the, we're not even really discussing the property tax implications of developments like this, which are also significant. If you look at it from an ROI standpoint, this is the best deal LaPorte County will ever cut, right? I mean, frankly, that's, that's an easy one for us to answer, just looking at it that way.
Excuse me. State your name, sir.
Matt Reardon, County Economic Development. We did look at the, kind of general property tax. So if you have a hundred and seventy-seven, or a hundred and seventy-seven units, times an average property tax rate, once you have deducts, it's about twenty-five hundred a unit. So that's about four hundred and forty-two thousand and change. The county portion of the tax rate is, what is it, Justin? You'll know off the top of your head. I don't know.
Depends on the tax.
Twenty, twenty, twenty percent maybe, or fifteen percent. So figure the return, because I was looking at this from the property tax standpoint and the income tax, and I said, if we're going to invest, what would it take to get it back, just like we would look at any other project? I like the optics of this, where the, the city is spending way more money than the county is. The other project, we spent all the money and the city got the benefit.
Could you, Matt, could you also, the, the meeting that we had over in St. Joe County over the New Carlyle project, and specifically what they're asking LaPorte County for is housing?
Yeah, they, the, the interest that was discussed in the same kind of challenges that Mayor Dermity was saying, we need more housing. And the projects they're talking about led to a discussion and, and an outreach to some of our councilpeople about, you know, we, we really need to look at that. So St. Joe County ran the utilities from, or not St. Joe County, St. Joe County paid for South Bend to run their utilities all the way out to New Carlyle.
Mayor, did you hear that?
Just in the future.
Just in the future. Sauer to New Carlyle.
As the city continues to, you know, get more revenues that you talked about, you know, extension of utilities is critical to success. It's a challenge that we talked about in redevelopment for housing development, to identify areas that have sewer and water. So again, I, I just wanted to talk, just from the property tax, take, I mean, use two thousand times a hundred and seventy-seven.
And I guess the thing that was unique about that meeting, but New Carlyle and St. Joe County is, they're coming to us going, we need housing for, for what they've got going on. They're encouraging us. You guys need, because they go, this is spilling over in LaPorte County, you need to be doing something now. So.
So that's, that should answer a little bit to that. And then, you know, the income also is a factor. Plus, the LaPorte school system probably could use more students and probably could use the income related to that.
Right. So, thank you, Matt. And Mr. Chair, I think Jerry Jackson, our superintendent, he has a boring life. He loves to treat waste, and we treat your county sewer waste now. So I mean, that partnership happens, whether it's in Rolling Prairie, on the island, it's not city property. The other part is, is maybe you haven't heard this, we certainly have, we're trapping those first home buyers when they've outgrown their home, and they're growing their family. They have nowhere to turn. The only place they turn is, we get the calls every day, hey, I'm going to still work in LaPorte, but look at Valpo, I have twenty homes sitting right here to choose from. Chesterton, I have these homes to choose from. I can maybe find one. And we had the YMCA Executive Director in, and we scoured, and everybody jumped on a Sunday afternoon because one home went up with a sign to, hey, let's get this guy now, let's help him. And that's literally how things go right now in the real estate market.
So what happens if we're not able to support you?
This project's going to move on. I mean, again, I think we have a partnership in the past, we want one in the future. We're going to continue to move, we can't turn our backs on what is the number one issue that our residents, your residents, together, all of our residents are asking for, to give a reason to bring our kids even back home. And come home here, raise a family, allow seniors to grow into a different situation where they may not have to maintain their yard. Where are they going to go right now? You know, look out at Regency where Mitch Ficus grows, people are walking around wondering, you know, who's sick, who doesn't feel well, because, hey, I want to keep an eye on that home to potentially buy it. And this is a real opportunity with what we would consider as a small investment for the future, that people are going to look back on ten years from now, fifteen and twenty years from now, to say, LaPorte County, city of LaPorte, and Michigan City were ahead of the game.
Mr. Gieske. Couple of things going across the spectrum. Some people know I'm a real estate investor also.
Really?
Shut up. So I could tell you, though, that a lot of problems are internal with Michigan City and LaPorte. Examples, the opportunities, we have tax sales, and all of a sudden, we go to those tax sales, and the house has been already torn down. I'm saying your administration, because there's previous administrations. There are nice homes like that, I could tell you that. I have homes throughout Michigan City that I, that's what I do, and I've gone to plenty, and I said, the city decides to tear them down. They're not even acquired by the city yet. They're, they're, they're a commissioner sale, but they do it. Second is, is that, like Michigan City, I don't know yours particularly, but Michigan City blew it by, the average area of the homes around was seven hundred and fifty square foot. So what do you think Michigan City did? They said you have to have a house one thousand square foot, which makes no sense at all, because the average house is a twenty-five by sixty-five foot parcel of land. So it makes it almost impossible, you're building onto the borders of the, of the area. So the other part of it is, are inspections. If you get to a group of, of your inspectors and you run the city of yours group, you know, I've, I've got to, where areas where they get pressured, and all of a sudden, I've been able to do my electrical work, and I've wired two of my homes, where now it's the rule, you can't do it now. So it's against your, and you have to do some test or whatever that. I have a simple solution. Let me wire the house, and if it's not, not the hardest, don't give me the occupancy rate. I'm using one example, I can use others going through. We don't get a very good, investors don't get a very good feeling of how working well with, with the inspection department. And that's everywhere, not just, not just here. That would help out a lot with the affordable housing that you can fix, and, and again, the people can fix their homes up and obtain them. Also, I'd like to see if that's not the case of your amount of money, because I see the amount of money you're investing. Michigan City did, I don't have facts from LaPorte, but they, when the last time, we were talking in eighty-two, eighty-three, when they actually had borrowed money better. So loans work better then, because that's the problem is that when you're in situations where these people are on the border, being able to buy the homes, that works, to me, a whole lot better than trying to build one house, where you could take that one house and do loans, help those people go back, and that money just keeps reinvesting, keeps reinvesting itself. I just think that we're, we always tend to look just one direction. Unfortunately, I think that's the direction. I'm not going to pick on, because you weren't on the part of it.
No, but please.
But Michigan City and LaPorte, we all got together and said, look, let's do economic development. Great. We all did a three-year program, we all three invested in this program. But then in three years, LaPorte and Michigan City said, well, that was fun, but we're going to separate ourselves. When we thought we had PNC offer us land to build, and we thought PNC was a nice centrally located area for a economic development project, we, we're taking our money, we're going to, we're not going to let you have it, you know? And that, that's, of course, as you know through Mr. Haney, that's some sour grapes that are in there, because that's not the way you develop a partnership. And I was involved with that. I know exactly, I can tell you any facts or figures you want to know on it. But it's a, it's a shame, because economic development should be a one-stop shop. It should not be this, this, what we have right now. I know that they work well with each other. I'm not saying you don't. We're still in the same sandbox, but we still, this is mine, and there's too much of that stuff. So I like to see a lot of this stuff change, but I really would like to see the, the city take it more proactive with their inspection department, and allowing landlords to develop their properties, or people persons to allow them to develop that property.
I think you couldn't have said it any better. And I will tell you, from the smaller type homes, not having this minimum and requirement, Craig Phillips right now is already working on that, has been working with builders, developers, to see, how can we build a thousand-square-foot home? That's a commitment from me, I want that. We need to start using our space better, not what was good twenty years ago, not what was good ten years ago, but let's start working together on that. In fact, we've been working with some builders to do that. When it comes to the landlords, and I will tell you this, there are good ones that are working every day and that we support. And we are out there every day knocking on their door. But the ones that are spraying bug spray and to use to deal with bedbugs, that was a federal offense of a landlord, he can pound sand if he ever gets a home back in the city of LaPorte. We won't allow it. When we have individuals in Kingsport Avenue, that you lean up against the drywall home and the wall collapses, unacceptable. So we're working every day, we're excited that we talk about Washington Street, Jefferson Street, to work with these individuals with funding to say, hey, these are quality homes in LaPorte. We want a walkable downtown. We know there's going to be a new YMCA or community center sometime very soon, where the YMCA can be a affordable senior living center. And so we're doing all of this right now, and between our code enforcement, our inspection team, as you talk about, and our police, because many of these people are using the fronts to deal drugs, to use drugs. And when we have a cornerstone across from City Hall with Lincoln School there, I'm telling you right now, we have zero tolerance for any drug use, drug dealing in that area, which are all rentals, and we're now cleaning that up. So I appreciate a hundred percent of what you're saying. You are right on. We're going to continue to move forward in that direction. We have a plan for that. But this is an opportunity with homes that people in LaPorte County are looking for, not all of them. We've seen rent at the banks that's been filled. We're going to be able to do this, hopefully with you. And hopefully, Mark, you and I didn't work on the projects of the past when everybody split off, but hopefully, we can set a tone right now, at your request, at my request, that we're going to financially do this together, and we're going to move forward together, because there's nothing more than we want Kingsbury to develop.
So just to understand, I have no problem with thousand-square-foot homes when you have a subdivision. I'm talking about when individual homes are tore down for whatever reason.
Sure.
Those are the ones that don't fit. I, I understand you're going to map out a thousand-square-foot homes. I didn't mean that. What I meant was, it's unrealistic in small little areas. That's why these houses, the United States vacant for quite some time.
And we want to be flexible to make sure we can put people in those homes. As long as they beat that standard of clean, respectful, safe living, I couldn't agree more. But to your point, you were frustrated with going their own ways. You have an opportunity tonight to do your parts to say, hey, it's a new day. I'll stand here right now. If you can support this, we support it, and you'll have my commitment, and we'll continue to work forward to make sure that when Matt has this Kingsbury moving forward, we saw what happened when the state got involved at Kingsbury, ruined a deal. We were prepared to come out and support, because people don't realize the corn is being sent to China now. Why not keep it on our land so we can control it? But again, where were those people going to live? I would ask you, Councilman Gieske, and everybody to say, look, let's change the future by doing what you want, and that's working together.
And the only thing is, I'm agreeing with a lot of what we said today, but the problem is, is just that I would, at least myself, I would vote for it differently if it was past our budget problem. Once we get past our budgets, then we know where we're at. I'm sorry, that's just, I'm not, I'm not here to downsize yours.
Sure.
That date's set in stone, and that would be the date that I would say after that, if we can find ourselves the leeway, I would, I would love to continue with this project. But we're, as you could, you heard through the evening, we're not. But we're, as you could you heard through the evening, we're not in the shape that we're we're supposed to be in.
And I would tell you, I if I can be frank, the ARP funds, I don't think were meant for budget. I understand the position you're in.
Know that, but we but we also are a different situation. I dealt with it. When you were when you were down legislating, I was the one that we who said we were we're gonna have a rainy fund. That wasn't your intention, but we have to do we have to do. But by by magic, you guys came up with the same idea a year later.
I understand. And that's where I would say, is five hundred thousand dollars going to save or crush a budget? Maybe a combination of all. But when we look back on history, are we gonna say, hey, we did this housing to change our future? And to change lives of our residents or we use the five hundred thousand, which I think when you guys look at a budget, you're all smart individuals. I think you can find a way to make this budget work. And I would just say, five hundred thousand. And you did six million for Michigan City and we support that of that infrastructure. That's a good thing for our county. All we're saying is, let's start together, working together as you've requested and put five hundred thousand on the table, which is twenty-five percent of the project. We'll commit seventy-five percent and let's go after housing and let's keep our people in Lepore County.
Question for the mayor or maybe his team. Well, actually, first a commendation. Thank you for going after that developer and making sure that our county didn't let them slip through our fingers. A question about when we were talking about property tax revenue, are you guys willing to commit not to do any abatements or TIFs, housing TIFs for this project? Because that would cut into the benefit significantly for the county.
The worst thing we could do, and first of all, we can't do a housing TIF unless we did it at the very beginning. But the worst thing we could do and talk about trying to have a partner and then saying, hey, we're gonna do a housing TIF. Where you get left in the cold and you would not receive any revenue. We've had internal discussions. I know if you look back at the team here, they would tell you, well, the mayor's the biggest stopping point of any housing TIF. I don't necessarily like those and we need those dollars not only to come to the county, the city, but also our school system. I think Matt mentioned our school system, how in need we are to grow our school system and to compete. Pulling more funds from them doesn't help that process. So I can definitely a hundred percent commit to you. That we will not turn these two projects into any housing TIF.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm really glad that you're bringing this to us because the shortage in cost of housing is probably a defining challenge for my generation. Housing is well known to be an important means of building generational wealth. And when we have a shortage or it's too costly to acquire housing here, that permanently harms my generation. So I think the need here is clear and I hope this is the first of many housing projects that come before this county in the near future. And so with that, I would make a motion to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars out of ARP for this housing development.
Can I just talk to the before you you can get a second?
And then it's gonna go to the commissioners.
I'll make a second and then you can go and then we can.
So just we're working on interlocal agreement. It's gonna be used for water and sewer. So that's clearly an ARP standard. The money is gonna be used before the end of the year. They will provide the county with an accounting of the funds.
Be appropriated.
No, no, the money is gonna be used by the end of the year, not appropriated, used by them.
Okay.
Or sooner. Yeah, yeah.
Probably already spent it.
And they'll provide an accounting to the county as to where the funds have gone. So that's the the nature of the agreement between.
So do we make this subject to that agreement?
Well, yeah, the agreements, yeah, subject to agreement and you'd have to make a conditional upon acceptance and approval by the commission. Because we're you'd be going in reverse.
Right. Are you good? So we're good to so.
I'll add my motion.
So you wanna say it?
He said it better than I ever could. You got it.
Yeah, so I was.
Make sure the auditor's office got it.
Right. So so any type of approval, if you're gonna approve tonight, would be conditional upon approval of the commission. Finding that it meets the ARP qualification.
And if I could just add not to ruin my own, I should shut up.
You probably should.
But he won't.
Support fully what he had said and think as we've gone through the same thing, we found the same situation.
Yep, definitely. Well, you know how I feel about housings and I think it's a great project.
You're gonna talk again?
Mr. Yagelski. Regardless of how regardless of how I how I vote, I I know that we had a project in Michigan City that fell apart because of a simple thing as this. I like that if you guys have a motion, at least put in there, they 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 will not seek a tax abatement. But friendly or no, I didn't hear him say friendly or no friendly because Michigan City claims it's friendly. It's okay legally to do that. That's the difference of what we're talking about. We're because they're gonna say.
What happily amend my motion to include that in there in the language when the agreement gets written up.
It's a page and a half so far.
That three projects that almost that went because of Michigan City.
No, definitely. Anything else? We have a motion and a second, a motion by Mr. Keel, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum out of ARP. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Aye. Thank you all very much for the support.
Please get on the commission's calendar for the next their next, which would be the first week of June.
All right. Is there any other comments?
There is a couple of things. So I I looked at the issue with Ms. Graves regarding adult probation. And the publication in the newspaper. I mean, there's a typo. It was supposed to be professional professional services.
Personal service, other other personal service.
Services and there's a typo. I mean, they need the money. The account's in red. It's a de minimis typo. I would recommend I would recommend that you possibly put it back on the agenda, but it's up to it's up to you.
What's your pleasure?
Did we vote to table it before?
No, we just took it off the agenda. So we just add it back.
Just add it back to the agenda. I have a I don't want to hold this back. But we went through a process last year where we had a wrong name. We had the right account number, the wrong name, and it took us two months to fix it. So I'm not holding that up against it. I'm just saying that we went through this process. I'm I'd be in agreement to bring it back on the agenda, say that there was a typo and let's get it done.
So that's a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by.
Second.
By Mr. Keel. To bring the request for one hundred and three thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars back on the agenda. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Two, two noes. So it's back on the agenda. So we're back to Lepore County. I'm gonna read it.
Yeah.
All right. Lepore County Adult Probation requests an additional appropriation from Public Safety Lit. For two probation officers missed in budgets, payroll deductions to be appropriated in June for the same fund, approximately twenty thousand dollars. For the I'm trying to read that. I scribbled it out, so I'm having to read through my scribble. So, yeah. But anyways, for a hundred and three thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. What's your pleasure?
Just for the record, Mr. Eric, we spoke before the meeting. If you could just summarize it just like you did with me before.
Sure. There were two positions that at budget time were covered by a Department of Corrections grant. They were pre-trial service. And after budget hearings, we were told that the grant would not be renewed. So we came to the council and requested remedy for that, at which point you agreed to put those two individuals in the lit tax. Which is the payroll that I've been paying since January.
But they somehow didn't get in there.
Somehow the money didn't get in there, but but so I had two officers already in that lit tax. They were originally being paid by our administrative fund and that ran out just a couple of years ago. So they were put in lit. And when this came about, these two were added to lit as well. But the money for all four positions was not.
Yeah, the first two got overlooked and then when it was confirmed, I don't think either of us recognized it. Yeah.
All right.
But I will say there's not enough in lit to cover that and the deductions.
And Mr. President, just as a remembrance, that was your some peoples on this council attempt, Matt, you were some people on this council attempt. Because the rule is you lose your grant, you lose the people. It's been it's been a fact. Everybody knows about it. It's not the best kept secret in Michigan and Lepore County. But if it's awful lit, then there's the jobs go away. That was what was said, if you remember correctly.
Are we under the impression that we'll get this grant back in the future or has it gone permanent?
We've applied. We'll find out since the Department of Corrections in July, I believe, will let us know.
So we'll know at budget hearings.
Can't guarantee that. I have to look at the timeline. I hope so.
Possibly.
Possibly.
So what's your pleasure?
I'd make a motion to approve it out of ARP.
I would recommend Riverboat.
So if it's approved out of ARP, it's gotta go to the commissioners for their approval.
No.
Well, we've had we've had a discussion earlier.
But we're not clear on that.
I I I know. We're not clear on it. I'm uncomfortable with.
So it's not.
In that case, that's gonna be slow. Let's go with Riverboat then. Motion revised.
Motion out of Riverboat by Mr. Keel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Are there any other questions or comments? And then we'll look at this again at budget time. So all those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
And if I can add for the record, I did pull the ledger. That account became negative on five fourteen twenty-four, which I believe is less than a month ago.
Five fourteen twenty-four.
Fifteen days ago.
Yes, not four months ago. May seventeen.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are you done with Mr. Eric?
Yes, you're done. Thank you all.
I have a word?
You may.
So we have a number of issues that we need to have a joint workshop with. I know that I met with Mr. Karanka and yourself. We have to talk about the water loss project. We have to talk about juvenile services. And we need to talk about this building that we're in right now and the cooling of this building. And we need to do this the first week of June, if possible. To have a joint workshop with the commission and the council, if that will work with you all. And Mr. Cunningham, I suggest a couple of nitroglycerin tablets. You might need it. I'm gonna need them.
Four billion, five million, six million, it's just somebody else's money.
Joint workshop. What, we need three days notice?
Two days, forty-eight hours excluding weekends or holidays.
Next Thursday?
Man, something then.
I got something too.
Yeah, not good. Friday?
No, Tuesday.
Does it need to be like next week for sure or into the next week?
Is it Tuesday good or?
How about the? Think, you know, since we're gonna be, we're gonna have to put some. You're gonna have to public if you're gonna choose to go ahead and move something, you're gonna have to get something in the newspaper to publish. So that's what it's dependent on.
For what?
Cut off for.
So you're looking at doing a.
Cut off appropriations for June. Because I thought that was the eleventh.
Tuesday for ten, it's supposed to be ten days before.
That would be the eleventh because our meeting's on the twenty-fourth.
Ten days before.
So can we do the eleventh?
There wouldn't be ten days notice.
We would have to do. I was thinking that we try and do Tuesday the fourth, but I don't know if anybody else is available. I don't know if this is available, what time it would be available.
Ten days. You said ten days.
On the fourth.
The appropriations have to be advertised.
So the appropriations would have to be advertised in a week later.
So it couldn't be the fourth.
I don't know.
Seventeenth will be the earliest.
We're trying to appropriate money at our next meeting.
So you have a workshop to discuss it prior to.
To have a workshop to discuss and then.
And that that's the goal is so that we can appropriate.
If you're gonna choose to go ahead and do and.
The sixth doesn't work for you, Mark?
Sure. Okay, so the appropriation can happen at the regular meeting. This is just a discussion about it.
Correct. Yeah, so you're all yeah, so you're all good. Yeah.
How about the fourth?
I'm not here, but I could jump on a Zoom.
You can do Zoom.
When's the fourth?
Tuesday.
I won't be back in town till Wednesday morning. You okay?
Well, how's Wednesday night? I mean, Wednesday afternoon, no good for you.
If you if everybody, if everything works for Tuesday, I could I'll zoom in.
We have to also see the.
Tuesday, Wednesday is fine.
Available, but we don't know.
Well, we can have it.
You're still gonna be before me.
Monday, the tenth, it's not enough time, is it?
The next morning, because the next morning it's gotta be.
In the paper on Friday.
Well, the question is whether or not we're gonna do the appropriation during that meeting or if we're gonna do it during our regular meeting. If we don't plan to appropriate anything during this workshop.
We just have to agree how to go out for appropriation.
Yeah.
Or we can move, Randy, you can ask it the the money to be appropriated. A commission can ask the money to be appropriated, whether you guys do something with it or not. But at least by the time it's up, it'll be informed.
How's Monday, the tenth?
Because that gives you plenty of time. The twenty-fourth's the meeting, right?
Advertise it that next day is when I turn it up for the meeting.
Six o'clock or you want to six o'clock?
I can do six, but five thirty is cutting it.
Okay. So we'll make it five forty-five. That way we're pushing.
Making me rush.
That's on six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
June tenth, six o'clock. You'll send something out on that.
And I guess we're gonna set the date and hopefully the commission will be able to be there.
So it'll be a joint.
It's gonna be.
And we also have to make sure this room's available.
I'll take care of that too.
All right. Anything else? Motion adjourned. If the motion by Mr. Yagelski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.